To Lunenburg County's heritage and to Bridgewater's story. But now it's so much more.
A hub of art and culture.
A home to events and celebrations, to the things that we hold dear and that make us special.
To experiences that are universal. And now, we need you.
The Bridgewater Museum Commission is looking for new members.
For just a few hours of your time each month, you can help the museum grow.
Help shape programming to welcome new residents and to make them feel at home.
Help to tell stories that need to be heard.
And help Desperse Museum thrive as a center for heritage, art, and culture in our community.
For more info or to apply, visit bridgewater.ca/serv.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, the secret is few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Mano2 Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, boot camps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger. And a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home. And there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
This isn't the museum that you remember.
It's still a home to Lunenburg County's heritage and to Bridgewater's story. But now it's so much more.
A hub of art and culture.
A home to events and celebrations, to the things that we hold dear and that make us special.
To experiences that are universal. And now, we need you.
The Bridgewater Museum Commission is looking for new members.
For just a few hours of your time each month, you can help the museum grow.
Help shape programming to welcome new residents and to make them feel at home.
Help to tell stories that need to be heard.
And help Desperse Museum thrive as a center for heritage, art, and culture in our community.
For more info or to apply, visit bridgewater.ca/serv.
I'm Amanda Fancy.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Just welcome members of the public who are watching us as we have our second budget meeting. This is part of our regular scheduled discussion session. And from now until whenever we wrap this up, we will be discussing the 2022-2023 town budget. So I think I'll turn it over to the CIO to kind of run us through the updates. We had some changes made last week?
Yep.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. And our staff will join us in a minute. I think they're in the committee room. Yeah, thinking that it's in there. At our last meeting, we presented to council the draft operating budget. And from that meeting, staff were asked to, a few questions that we wanted some clarification on. And we also advised at that time that we were approximately around $106,000 in a deficit position. So we needed to make some decisions with respects to where we would find that within this draft budget. So staff were asked to go away and work on that. And we were also asked about looking at deed transfer tax and given a little bit of a trend history there, reserve allocations, and what would be the appropriate amount to have. So Kim has some information on that. We were asked to look at King Street parking as well. And so we did get clarification in your budget document. And I believe it is, it's entitled "King Street Parking", but it's actually our town parking lots. And King Street Park, that budget that says King Street Parking just contains the maintenance costs for meters and stuff like that. But it doesn't contain the salaries associated with enforcement or the revenue associated with parking meters. So we didn't actually look at that option as a reduction in the budget, simply because it would have actually lost, we actually make a profit off that. If you just look at that within the police budget, it's around a $12,000 profit. So perhaps what we can do is just start at slide 37, and hopefully I don't keep getting bounced off the projector. And these are the new slides, slide 37 forward, that provides you with a bit of a summary in terms of the operating reserve, some changes there. We talk about what things could be possible reductions and about what would be appropriate amounts to have in the reserve as well. So Kim, I'm going to turn it over to you if you're good to go on kind of just explaining the changes, they're highlighted in blue, but the changes that we've made to the operating reserve since you've seen them last in your last budget presentation.
Sure. So the last three items that are, the font is in blue, are the changes. So previously, when the reserve policies were approved, those reserve policies had identified that interest earned on the reserves would stay in the reserves unless council budgeted or separately approved a resolution to bring that income into operations. Because this is the first year we missed actually adding that interest income to the reserve budget. So we've entered a nominal amount there. It could be more, it could be less. We may be short-term borrowing from our reserves based on the list of capital projects, so we didn't want to aim too high. In addition, the special purpose tax reserve is expected to increase a small amount during the year. The undesignated operating reserve changed by $430,000 when we had removed the capital from operating and had to switch it to borrowing from operating reserves. I hadn't updated this schedule for that, and there was a mathematical error. So the total is $7.8 million that would be left in operating reserve at the end of 2022-2023, based on the budget and the capital funding. There was also a question, I believe, about how much we should have in reserves. And so I just kind of circled back to when council looked at the reserve policies. So the operating reserve policy set a minimum target of 20% of general operating expenses as a minimum. When we look at our financial condition indicators that the province calculates, they've identified 20% as low risk, so anything greater than 20% is good. For our 2021 fiscal year, because we're just finishing up 21-22, so this is our most recent completed year, we were at 53.9% for operating reserve. And the only other guidance we really see is from quite a while ago, in 2009, and that's the Government Finance Officers Association of Alberta had an article saying you shouldn't have less than two months of general operating expenses in your operating reserve. So that would only be about 16%. So we're higher than both of those kind of benchmarks, and they're the really, the only guidance we really have. On the capital reserve side, when we set the policy, we said that we were targeting to have at least 10% of our operating expenses plus amortization in our reserve, and we were at 11.3% at that time. And so we know we're not actively funding the capital reserve at this point in time. Obviously, with the capital budget, we have, you know, a lack of ability to put some extra money in there. But land sales and asset sales have been going in there, and we've been using it the least we can. The one thing to keep in mind, too, the capital reserve and this calculation doesn't include our gas tax money. So we always seem, you know, because of the time lag in completing projects, we also usually have about a million dollars in gas tax that's carrying over year over year. So we actually do have more, but it's not included in that calculation. I believe there was also a question about deed transfer tax and kind of where it's been. So if we look at kind of the trend, we were certainly under 400,000 about 10 years ago. And we obtained the information, we had information in our accounting records, but we also went back to the Registry of Deeds, who could give us every single transaction for the last 10 years. And so we were able to get numbers on how many transactions plus the amount of deed transfer tax. So this gives you an idea. And obviously, the 2020 and 2021 year that we're in right now, were two high years. 2019 was actually moderately high, but includes a couple of million-dollar properties that are throwing the number up a little bit higher. But if I had a ruler and I took those anomalies out, it would still be a steep upward incline. The next slide shows that information in a little bit different sense, Tammy, if you want to. If you don't lose the slides.
It's stuck.
Oh, it's stuck. Okay. The next one, and I'll have it in your presentation package, but it was the deed transfer tax average. So the total deed transfer tax divided by the number of properties that sold in the year. And also, I know we're looking at a different slide up there, but it's basically the same trend. It's an upward trend, even if we normalize the 2019 year, which had a big spike because of a few specific properties, it was also increasing. The next slide, I just did a little bit of math for everyone there, too. So the average number of transactions over that 10-year period, including the last two years where we've seen an increase in activity, the average number of transactions per year would be 227. If we took out the last two years, it would still be 218. So it's only gone up by about, the average has only gone up by 10 per year if you include the two years where we're seeing more market activity. So just as an idea to give us a calculation of where we, you know, our thoughts were when we're budgeting, if we look at the average 2022 deed transfer tax times the average number of properties excluding the last two years, we could have up to 763,000 of deed transfer tax income. Just to give us a kind of guideline of, you know, the increase in the market value is not likely to go down. So if we kind of look at that as our new average price times the average number of properties, it's 600,000 is certainly within reason. And of course, it's just an estimate, because we really can't determine what the market's going to do.
So this slide here shows you some of the changes that we made to the operating budget since you saw it last Monday night on March 28. And as indicated earlier, we started, when we presented the budget to you last Monday night, we had a deficit of 106,071. So there have been some changes that have been made that result in an adjusted deficit of 89,722. So we had a deeper dive into the engineering wage allocation, and we identified there that there was $9,696 to the good. In terms of what's in the operating budget, in terms of public work wages, and if council will remember, you had received a report where we kind of identified some resource requirements and indicated that in public works, there is a proposal to have three seasonal public works positions and then have two seasonal turn to full-time. And we've been able to confirm that the two seasonal turning to full-time, they essentially work those full-time hours now, save a couple weeks where they're laid off. So there's not a large impact to the budget, and it's already included in the budget because of that, because they have been working those hours anyway, but remaining seasonal instead of full-time. And then in terms of the seasonal positions, we either do projects using our own labor or we contract out. So the money's there for either one. So assuming that there's no changes to the capital budget, the budget would already have had sufficient funds in the budget to accommodate those wages through contract labor. So the options there to look at those seasonal positions as well. But as I say, if you reduce the capital budget, some of that may have labor associated with it that would eliminate that. We also looked at, there is an energy management as part of the energy management plan that we presented earlier this year to council. There was an awareness piece that originally got kind of captured in capital, and we had to move that out and put that into operating. And that comes with, we're suggesting reserve funding to help offset that cost, because it would be a one-time thing. And that's an awareness piece that our energy management staff person, Miles, suggests that that's the first step, is that awareness piece. And there's some delayed projects that we had in the 2021-22 budget that we haven't ordered, but the delivery's going to be delayed, so we can't pay for them. So those we're suggesting would have to appear in your budget, but the funds come with it as well. The municipal joint services board, we received their budget at the board last week, and that budget has some impacts in terms of tipping fees. That would see us have a higher bill there for waste. There is IT, wastewater treatment plant IT implementation that we're suggesting rather than fund it from our general rate, that it'd be funded through the sewer rate, because it's specific to wastewater. IT equipment that we have in our operating budget right now that is to help fund the IT reserve, we're suggesting that there is a reserve that could be used to fund that equipment. And there's just some adjustments that were made for fire department. They didn't account for fuel and insurance increases. Canada Day, we're suggesting that that could be funded from the Canada Day reserve. There's some funds in there. COVID safe restart, we have some budget remaining in this year's budget that was funded through a grant, so we're just carrying that money forward to complete those initiatives. And the main one there is time and attendance. And then there's capital from operating for energy management, solar PV of 6,000 that was added to the budget. So all those ups and downs bring it to 89,722 in operating deficit that would need to be made up. And then this slide shows you what some of those options are. So some of them, I think pretty much all of them, you saw at the last meeting. There's, you know, the paving improvements. You could reduce your allocation in your capital from 600 to 500. There's security cameras at town hall and town hall heat pump. We could delay those by a year, knowing that we're exploring some alternative options for town hall. If you delay the heat pumps upgrades, that there would be some maintenance that would have to be added into the budget of 5,000. There's the ride-on roller, we could delay that. We do have 125,000 in contingency. And at our last meeting, we indicated to you that some of that was because we weren't too sure about the wages within the engineering and public work. So we've spent a lot of time in that area and have determined that we're okay. So we could reduce the contingency down. So the contingencies used for things, the unknowns that come up throughout the year that you might want to do some things. And so reducing it would kind of limit your options there, but we could go down to 65. The lights, Dufferin and York, as we indicated at the last meeting, this was more about the traffic counts suggested that you didn't need to have a signalized intersection there. Having a signalized intersection there doesn't impact flow or anything like that. It's just, they're not necessary, but there's nothing that says you have to take them out. The green charter, there was some question about how much, and so we had 20,000 in there. Until council really defines the scope of what you want, it's hard to say what that would be. But we're suggesting that you could reduce that to 15. And then there was facility signage, which was identified in your open space strategic plan or your open space plan as initiatives that you wanted to do. And as Larry indicated, we'd be probably buying the signs this year and installing them next. If we don't do them this year, we just kind of move everything out of here. So those are, there's 363,500 in options. And of course, council can, you know, decide other options as well, if you wish to explore other things. But those were things that we had brought, kind of discussed at our last meeting and brought forward. And as I indicated, the parking on King Street was asked, but the assumptions being made that since that actually adds revenue into the budget, that we wouldn't be offering that one out. But council can certainly put that one in there, too, if you wish.
So you're looking for a minimum 90,000 in?
Basically, yeah. Yeah, 80, yeah, 90.
Okay. If I can make a suggestion, just I had a conversation with a staff person who works in this realm, in terms of the green charter. And also, after our last meeting, I emailed the C40 and a couple of people who deal in this. And consensus was, the response in the C40 was, what's a green charter? And the other was, the green charter is not something that anyone uses anymore. It's very late 1990s, early 2000s. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought, if people don't understand what it is, I don't know what it gets us, right? So this was part of our economic development strategy, as maybe branding or something like that. But if you Google "green charter," it comes up with medical, it's a medical thing. It has nothing to do with environmental. So my suggestion would be, and we'll go around, as we talk through these, we can leave it in or take them out. But my suggestion would be to pull that whole $20,000 out and figure out what it is that we actually want. Like if it's just a branding exercise, wouldn't it be better to say Home and Smart Cities Challenge winner 2019? Or what is it? So the conversation I had with the staff was, our ICSP is essentially part of green charter, right? So if that is what the consultants think of green charter is, and we already have it, obviously maybe some fine tuning, but not $20,000 worth. So as I look for savings, to get to that 90, mine was to reduce the contingency, leave the lights in at York and Dufferin, and eliminate the green charter. And that gets us, those were mine to get us over 90. Council call well.
I'm sorry, I missed the other items you mentioned. What were they again?
So that they reduce the contingency. So that gets us $60,000 in savings, leaving the, not removing the lights. That's 15, and then the green charter is really 20.
Yeah.
Round it.
Yeah. So those were just my initial ones. I don't have an appetite for removing, reducing paving, unless staff say they can only do $500,000 in paving. But I think we know we can do more than that, so. Oh, yeah, and then, to me, the security cameras don't make sense to do. So the heat pumps is probably a conversation to have based on whether areas, other areas of the town, town hall that are unbearable to work in, can't, can't have that, but thoughts from others on, on this list or other items? I know you had raised parking, I don't know if you want to talk about that.
No, no, that, that makes sense now. The, the lights at Dufferin, New York, I guess my only concern there is, when was the last time we did work on them, and is there any foreseeable work on them versus just removing them completely? Anytime we seem to do work on lights, it costs a small fortune, so.
Your guess is as good as mine is. Is that what you're saying, Larry?
No, I was seeing head shaking, so nothing's planned there?
No.
No.
We just replaced one not till long ago, a car hit it or something, a few months ago, maybe a year ago.
Oh yeah?
One on York Street.
Other thoughts? Council call well?
If we may be finding a new home for town hall, I'm not sure I see the need to spend seventy thousand dollars on heat pumps. If we can get by with doing some maintenance in the short term.
Do, can we?
That's my understanding, Larry, is that Kirk's suggesting five thousand dollars be put in to, to keep things tolerable for the next year if we don't do the seventy thousand, right? Yeah.
Okay.
That would be my main suggestion, and I, I was wondering how council feels about the increase to the police budget.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. I did have a conversation with, with the police chief about that, because there was a suggestion made that he may be able to find some reductions. After taking the close look at it with, with the deputy, he advised that they probably would be able to find like four thousand, but not, nothing significant. What they would end up doing is increasing the revenue. So he indicated to council that they were conservative in their criminal records checks revenue, like their contracts for service. And, and so he felt that if anything, that's probably where it would, the change would be. But that's a change in, in the deliberate approach to put the revenue number at that. So there is a little risk in that. And the other option is, of course, the reserve. But he didn't feel there was big reductions in the operating budget, in the, in the expenses that was in the, in the revenue.
If we remove the lights at Dufferin and New York, is there residual value in that equipment, or?
Just for parts? Okay. Jennifer, I see you have your hand up.
The one thing that I didn't want to touch was the paving, so I'd like to leave that where it is, and I think, I think others were agreeing with that as well. The contingency, I'm also a little bit hesitant to reduce that at least so significantly. I know it feels like we're coming out of COVID and a very uncertain two years, but we're coming out of a lot of uncertainty over a two-year period. There are so many things that I think could pop up. We're making some changes to the budget and, you know, looking at alternatives from town hall, and it feels like there's a, there's a number of things on our plates over the next year that could result in some unexpected expenses. So I, you know, I'm leaning towards taking up the heat pumps and maintaining the contingency a little bit more. I'm not just reducing it, but not, maybe not that significantly.
So if we take a heat pump, security cameras, and five thousand for green charter, we're there, right? Pretty much?
Well, you're really taking out twenty thousand dollars for green charter, right?
If you just don't do the green charter.
Because that's five thousand dollars of savings to reduce it to fifteen, so really...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Right, fair enough.
Yeah.
So, and if the town hall heat pumps really is sixty-five in savings, right? Because you're going to leave five in.
Yeah.
But that's in there, right?
You have to add that back in, so it'd be ninety, that'd be above ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand.
And we're comfortable with the amount that we're, have allocated for paving right now? I know this was looking at reducing it, but we seem to be wanting to keep it at the initial level. Was that six hundred thousand reduced from our initial amount? Or that's what it was from the start?
I think historically, it's been four hundred thousand, and then council, over the last few years, has been adding to that. And you also have two hundred thousand in operating for smaller pavement management type jobs, so that's eight hundred thousand.
Plus, there's millions of dollars of other roadwork being done.
Yes, that's right.
So I know, just some people are like, you're only doing eight hundred thousand, and then there's large projects that are being done.
Over the top.
So we've got two hundred thousand in our operating budget for paving, or is it three?
Two hundred.
Two, well that gives us eight hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. I kind of, I may go along with the deputy mayor, security cameras, heat pumps, and green charter. I'd like to see those lights taken out at some point in time. And they can be used for parts, but they're fairly old. So that gives us, I think, and then the contingency plan can go back to one twenty-five?
Yeah.
I'd be happy with that. Because the contingency, we're not spending unless we have to.
That's right.
Right? So we're really not obligating that unless it's emergency. Does that give us what we need, Kim?
So I got heat pumps, green charter, security camera, where the lights at Dufferin and that?
Let's go, let's go through where we have, we seem to have consensus, so we're going to leave the, leave the paving in at the hundred, at the six hundred thousand. We have consensus on removing the security cameras.
Yep.
I feel like we have consensus on the heat pumps going down to just five thousand dollars for servicing.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so that is in there, you're right, so that's, that's, it seems like the ride-on roller gets to stay in there. Okay. I'm going to skip the lights because we've had a suggestion to take them out and a suggestion to leave them in. So the green charter is out, and the facility signage, we're still leaving in. So really, if, the only thing where we don't yet have consensus is the lights. So we, we do meet our target by removing the lights, but we don't, we can go beyond, we can save more money. I, I'm, for me, I'd, I'd leave them in, but if they break, I'd want to have, if we're leaving that contingency, can we use that contingency to, to, we're not, we wouldn't repair them, I would, I guess, is where I would go.
No.
If they, if they break, I'd want them to come out.
Yeah, no, that, that's...
Does that make sense?
I don't know, we asked a consultant to do a study, they recommended taking them out, and we have capacity to take them out, so get, take them out.
Well, and that's true, we have the capacity.
That's why I would be...
Jennifer?
If we're going to spend the money now or next year, and we have the money to do it now, then we might as well do it now.
Well, this does give us the room to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay? Thoughts?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that, Council call? Yeah?
Yes, I am okay with that. I do have a question though about the green charter, so we went through a whole process and decided this was important, and now we're not. I'm just wondering if we can, if we leave it out, we can at least have further discussion about doing it in the future.
Yeah, and I, I think it's just, it's figuring out what it is we want, so if it, if it becomes, if the ICSP becomes the foundation for that, then we don't need to hire another consultant to go do that, it's figuring out what that is. Sorry, Jessica, keep looking at you, because that's your department, but I think that's, I think staff are feeling the same way, like a green charter was what they kind of laid down in front of us, but I agree, we need to figure something out, but.
Okay.
Mike?
Excuse me, thank you. First question, ICSP.
Integrated Community.
Sustainability Plan.
Okay, thanks. Larry had mentioned, or Tammy had mentioned that facility signage, and Larry said that the signage is being repaired, but the install will be delayed, put off until next year, is that correct?
My understanding is you buy it later in the fiscal year, and they install it the following fiscal year. So if it's in the budget, we'll buy it next winter and install it the following spring, summer, sometime in that, in that, in that timeframe.
So it stays in this budget?
So signs one fiscal year, install the next.
So right now, it's in this budget?
It's in the budget, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the lights at New York, yeah, I want to see them done, I think we have the rule that's given them. Thanks.
Okay. Jennifer?
Is Larry there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Larry, come on down.
If we remove those lights, it just occurred to me, and then the consultants didn't say anything, but is there anything we need to do to enhance crosswalk safety there?
He's coming down to the podium.
If I recall correctly, I think it's going to be a four-way stop, so there would be crosswalk markings as well.
Okay, lights, nothing like that is required in, in a four-way stop like that?
No, it'd be controlled stop with crosswalks.
So you wouldn't put the, the red beacon, flashing red beacon or anything like that?
Um, no, there'd have to be, I guess there'd be like some advance warning, there's a period where we have to ensure that the public's aware of a change, so there'd be some like advance warning signs for a few months or so, until people get used to the change for, at its safety, I guess.
Do you make it like a four-way red flash with stop signs there, and then slowly kind of wean people off the lights?
Possibly. We'd have to look at what options and the regulations there would be to, I guess, follow in that circumstance.
Jennifer, does that answer your question?
It does, but just as a comment while it's on my mind, maybe we should notify the school. There's a lot of students that walk from community neighborhoods on the other side of that intersection to the school, so it might be good to notify the schools that they can notify families, and those families can talk to their kids about safe crossing at a four-way stop as opposed to the lights.
Yep, good idea. Other, other questions? Do you have a, do you have a total, Tammy? Do you have a running total?
So right now, we're at, we're at a hundred thousand, yeah, no, ninety-five, because we had to add any heat pumps, right?
So it would leave us with a surplus of five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight, based on the recommended changes, so you have to decide where it's going. You can go to capital, we can just put it in the contingency reserve just to balance things.
I would put more paving. Yeah, five thousand dollars more paving. It's like four potholes. Are there, other comments or suggestions? List was lean.
This was easy.
I have to check before I come down. How quickly we forget last week.
I know.
It was easy after a hard meeting.
A lot of unknowns.
Yeah. Staff do a phenomenal job on that.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, so one, one thing that I will need some direction from council on is respects to the, the seasonal public work positions and the, the two full-time public work positions.
Moving them to, to full-time?
Yeah, the full-time in particular, because then they become full-time, they're permanent, like they're, they're in there. The seasonal, ideally, we'd like to be consistent from year to year, but if we're going to advertise for them, I would like council to be aware of that and say that, yes, we're comfortable adding that, that to our, our staff complement as opposed to contracting that labor.
Yeah, so I believe council, with that's the direction we wanted to go after, we saw the budget, but is that still the, the direction that Council Thorben and Council call?
Yeah, Tammy, that extra money that you showed on that one side, that, put in your seven thousand dollars, is that to offset additional wages with the season becoming permanent?
Uh, the correction of engineering wage allocation?
Yeah.
No, I think that was just going in and looking at how we had it allocated, is that correct? And finding that as extra that we...
So if we make them full-time, is their wages going to come up somewhere else, or?
They're, it's already in the budget.
Okay, no, that's beautiful, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Council call?
For the seasonal workers versus contract, is there a difference in costs?
I would say there might be a slight difference, but the challenge would be the, being able to get the contract workers, right? That's where we find that our challenge is, for smaller jobs, we, we're not that successful at being able to contract those out, because they're busy.
Okay, so, so my understanding is then the cost difference may be, you know, negligible, but there are benefits to doing the season.
Is that fair to say? Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Jennifer?
I think if we want to maintain a level of service, and we want to be fair to our staff, not burn them out, reduce kind of overtime banks and so on, then we absolutely have to, to, you know, move forward with these positions. I think if we don't do it this year, it's going to come out as next year and the year after, and the year after, but we're always going to be behind. So I, I think we should absolutely be moving forward with it this year.
Thank you. Well, we have things we need to get done, right? And every time we are going out for contractors, or going out for labor, and because we don't have it, is days or weeks or months that we don't, the work's not getting done. So I know, the biggest call I get from people, the most frequent call I get from people is less about, what's, it's mostly, you need to do more work. So I, I think there's a realization that, you know, things do cost money, and they want us to save as much money as possible, but you can't fix potholes if you don't have people out there fixing potholes, for example, right? Or building sidewalks or whatever, so. Last kind of round of questions or changes? No, did you have more to add?
The only thing I had is that earlier today, there was a question about our debt service ratios that we show for our capital planning, so I'm just going to, hopefully I don't get booted off here, run you through that here. So the comment, you know, comments, every time we present...
Did you want that on the screen? Sorry.
Yes, I do want that on the screen, so just one moment.
I can see it changing on your screen here, but...
It's not doing it there, right? Okay. So we will join again, and fingers crossed.
Perhaps new projector should be in the budget.
Can we get one for five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
My goodness, I hope so. And I'm only half kidding, I think projector should be in the, in the budget. Because this isn't, this isn't great.
We're losing the connection for some reason, yeah. So, and it's not found, that's great. Okay, so.
Is it in the budget present, it's not in the budget?
It's in the budget presentation, it is slide thirty-two.
Okay.
I don't know, Sandra, if you're able to find the projector on yours?
I don't get a shot.
Okay. Council, we all have that, and so we'll get that up for people watching the live stream.
So essentially, when we present the ten-year capital budget, there is often a comment made that, you know, we show, we show the funding that we know about, right? And so this, this budget is kind of your worst-case scenario budget in the sense that it has whatever grants we know we're going to get, but we don't make any assumptions about grants in the future that we don't know about. So we have the gas tax built into our ten-year capital plan. For the next couple of years, you'll see grants of, like for instance, this year, there's two-point-eight million and six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and those are our, our wastewater grants that we, that we have. And then we show like if we're funding from capital and operating reserve. So the, you know, the question, the question's always asked that, why don't you, why don't you make assumptions about future years? Because often, you know, when we do capital projects, we apply for funding, and every year we make a decision about whether we're going to do them, and it's usually based on whether or not we're able to get funding. So the challenge with making assumptions about capital or funding for, for capital projects is that we show a picture that might not be realized, right? And if we don't show it, we show a picture that might not be realized either, right? So it's, it's, it's really just used as a tool to help council understand when you're making capital decisions about capital investments, that these are all the things on the horizon, and this is kind of what we think you might have to borrow, or what your debt service ratio could be without funding, so that you have that in your mind when you're looking at your future planning. So we, we did kind of look at what would happen if we made the assumption that we're going to get an extra five million dollars worth of funding to help offset some of our wastewater costs as we go through future fiscal years. So Kim did some projections for us. So Kim did some projections for us on that to look at what would happen if we get $1 million in '24, '25, and then '25, '26, and then the next year again, and then in the following year, we get 2 million. So total of $5 million over four fiscal years. What, what would that, what would that look like? And what would that do to our debt service ratio? So our debt service ratio went as high as 16.9 in '27, '28. And what that would do is just make a difference of 15.8. So it'd bring it down to 15.8. So it doesn't have a huge impact on our debt service ratio. We need a big infusion of grant money, like big, to really have a big impact on that. It does bring it closer to 15, but it doesn't, doesn't make a big difference. So it's just kind of illustrate while, while it, you know, when the question's out there, we could put it in, but it's not going to make a big, big difference in terms of the debt service ratio. So every year, when we look at our capital planning, and even a few years out, our grant coordinator is always looking at what funds may be possible. So we applied for the disaster mitigation adaptation fund, that was 20, 20-some million. And if we, if we're able to get funding for that, then that's going to change how this looks again, right?
Do we know by how much that would be?
You did that.
We had presented that when we had asked for council approval to, to do the application, so it was significant. They did require us to have like a 30% contingency added to all our budget items. So when we added the contingency, it, it doesn't, you know, help as much as $20 million would look like in our budget, so. But it was definitely, I think it kept us right around the 15 marker lower.
I think it was just below, right?
In every year, yeah. So it would just depend on where that kind of contingent, if we didn't need the contingency, then absolutely, it was much better scenario.
Okay.
I get it, Sandra.
And that really doesn't take in the consideration, any of that tax revenue increases.
That's right.
Year after year. And we know what that's been going up each year.
There is some assumption of that, because they use the debt affordability model, so there is some assumption of growth, but not the growth we've been seeing as much. So, you know, if that were to continue for five more years, then, then the debt service ratio gets way better. But we, again, we can't, we don't want to assume too much and have a, an unrealistic picture, so.
Well, we know we got two big project over 1,500 year housing units.
Yep.
Possibly in the near future, so it looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather we continue to forecast or budget for a worst-case scenario, because then there's, there's really no shocks, right? Like, we're just, it's only going to be better versus overestimating revenue and underestimating expenses. And then every year, you have to sit around the table and say, I don't know what happened, because we're, you know, millions of dollars of deficits, which we do, you know, if we do this, we should not encounter that, unless we have something unforeseen, so.
I think the big thing that scared me was if we borrow that and we get up that high, we've got to pay that back. So a lot of the funds that we craft are going to pay the interest on this debt charges, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have to continue to work with the province and the federal government to, you know, make sure that they understand the value and the work being done. Hopefully, we get the disaster mitigation fund, get that, that 20 million. Other provincial monies, we'll just keep, we'll keep going, looking for those. Council call well.
Do we have any update on when we may find out about the disaster mitigation funding?
Yeah, actually Allison was talking to her today, and she, she was surprised we haven't heard yet. She anticipated March, the end of March. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we hear something. When she goes in to look at the status, it just states under review.
And is it that, that's the first round? Or is it we find out that we got it, we find out that we're shortlisted, kind of thing?
And my understanding is, is that if, this is, this is a round. Will either be approved, if not, we can resubmit in June, I think it is.
Okay. So it's not like a, you know.
It's not a qualifier that then takes you to the next step.
Okay. Fingers crossed. Other questions or comments? Kind of, I kind of like having the TV in the place where, so for, for Council Conklin and Council McDowell, the TV is sitting in your seats.
Yeah, I, actually, I can see that I'm actually in my spot, Jennifer's in hers, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, you flipped around based on who turned their camera on first, because you were, you were sitting in her seat, Council Conklin, which I was going to ask you to move, but it's okay now. Awesome.
Okay, I'm still there.
All right. Anything else from you?
No.
Okay. So next week, if you have any questions, make sure you reach out to staff. Next week, the budget meeting will again be at seven o'clock, and that will be for kind of final update and approval. And that's great. So thank you very much, and have a great night.